Good evening. We have a forum. We'll call the time of the board meeting to order. Just for information, Mr. Dwyer is not here tonight, so we have a formal form of the board, and we have no special permits we're talking about. We're just talking about general information and then with the planning commission. First up for general information is James and Jeanette Sessler?
Sessler.
Sessler. Okay, what you got?
What do I got? I'm gonna give each one of these. This is concerning the 8 French Street property. And Randy was talking about being here.
Right.
He prepared the survey that you were on last time for, so we had that done. That's the large page. And it shows his proposed 30,000 square foot building lot on there. And... Most of the references in here pertain to the non-conforming aspects, I guess, of the existing lot as a whole. So the... This part of it, because it's so narrow and close to the road and to the water, it's not... You know, that's a pretty... It's already designated a non-conforming, like the whole rest of the street is. So this would be conforming, because it has the right amount of space with the sewer and town water and all that already there. So the question, I guess, is... We're changing the lot, but we're not changing the non-conforming/conforming? I don't know.
Okay, so that's the questions. This 1.97 acres is the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Okay, I don't know what you're showing us here.
This is the number of square feet in this whole piece of property here. Not this... If you look at this map, which is the accessory map, it actually shows the street. This is actually French Street here.
Okay.
But this survey...
Is that the one on the corner? The Lady King Inn?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So this does not show the French Street Road, which cuts through here. So now you've got this little parcel here, which is this.
This shows the whole thing.
Well, this is 47?
This is Mount Warner.
This is Mount Warner.
Mount Warner here, and then French Street comes along here, like...
This is 47. How do you put it? This is 47 right there.
This is... No, no. This is Mount Warner Road, French Street, Mount Warner Road. This is a river that comes... This is a road that comes off of that point. Is this the river right here?
Yes.
What's the address on that? I can write it down.
It's 8 French Street.
Exactly where it is. North. Now, you... North is...
North is this way.
North is... This way, yeah. Or this way. No, this is upside down. I got it upside down. This is Mount Warner, and French Street is right here. Goes out to 47 over here.
Yes.
Number one, this is not a survey property. This is from an accessory's map.
No, this is the actual survey.
Randy's survey.
He asked me.
Where's the stamp? I don't see the stamp.
I don't have the actual... I don't have the actual survey. But this was the one that he took off the survey to show me the proposed...
So the question was, can you get an additional lot in there? You're gonna buy this piece of property.
We bought this piece of property.
And you have a house?
This is the house.
Yes.
This is the garage.
Correct.
This is a shed, and this is a chicken...
So where's the... Now, what about the dividing line? That's the correct... That was the problem. It's a pre-existing non-conforming use if you divide this up, and you're making this more non-conforming.
Correct.
And so, the question is, where does he want to make the dividing line here?
And with this being the proposed, whatever the setback from here would be... And there's the frontage would be on French Street. There would be plenty of frontage for both properties.
So...
Just in half, I guess.
Well... You showed that you could get the square of this piece of property.
Right.
But this piece of property is non-conforming, so by making the lot smaller, you're making a non-conforming lot or non-conforming. So that's the question we formed. And Randy was saying, well, he's gonna confer with you and come back. And so now you're coming back, and... So that's the decision we have to make. This is not... This is not if you go before the ZBA discuss how to make a living anyways. Because he does own a variance.
Right.
But he wondered if he would be opposed to it.
Yes.
I wouldn't look at the site. You own this across the street.
Yes.
And, you know, it does appear to have enough room for another house there.
Yeah. If you look at this map, which shows this is what's left of the piece across the street after they ran the street through.
Yeah.
So what do they have to do then? Accessory land?
It's one lot.
One.
So that's accessory land. I have absolutely no problem.
Yeah, I kinda look at it as urban renewal for North Island. That French Street is a cannibal.
Yeah.
We're working on the street.
We're working on the house, and that's coming along for sure.
It's gonna be an improvement, an addition.
But I wanna make sure that, you know, it gets divided up in a way that makes sense.
Oh, Randy's a guy should... You know, he knows all the zoning, and he's a surveyor.
The question is, can you build within... I mean, is this required as a conservation commission?
Right.
Well, is the top of the hill is built?
I don't think so.
Right.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, you're only...
The river.
Maybe 75 yards away from the dam, right? I mean, the dam's right there.
But he lives there.
We're pretty far away.
He's in the water.
Yeah.
This is the old...
That's the old Pogway House, French time.
It's the old Grisville, if you were. Is that where?
No.
No, that's not...
That's on Mount Warner.
But that's on Mount Warner.
Yeah.
So that would be...
That would be this piece of property here.
Okay. Where is the DM location? Is this right here?
Yeah.
Straight north?
Yeah. It would be right about here. This is the book, and the hand is right about here.
You own a road here?
Yes.
Can you cross the road? No.
No, I mean, the north.
No, there's a lot right here. There's this lot.
This lot here, 41, is this 30-foot wide piece, this strip? We also own that.
You own that?
Yeah, and then this is about four feet to our... Which was an existing barn is there in our driveway, and everything is right there. So that's pretty much where we start living. So this piece, we also purchased that, so we own this. If we needed more, talked this over, or twisted a little or something, we could still, you know, give up some of this stuff and let them trouble to make enough space over here.
The ZBA?
Yeah. Is anybody in this work at a house? Anyone else?
I'm not crazy about it. I'm not going to the poison.
No, you mean, do you think he's gonna make an improvement here? It'll work better, not worse?
The only condition I'd like to see on this lot is that it be a single-family use only, no accessory apartments, and no business used because of the French Street and everything else around it.
That's not business zone?
No accessory apartment, and no home occupied, whole-home business.
I'm thinking of a house you wanted to build there, right? You're gonna build it, or are you just...
I probably will just sell it to someone who was gonna build it, and actually...
Well, see, that makes a complete difference, though, if he's gonna sell it. Because he owns this, though, so this lot. It's a tough call, because this is gonna be sold if somebody's gonna build a house there. You just made a non-conforming lot more non-conforming.
Well, does that other lot, that other part go with it?
No. No. It's gonna be two different lots. So what I'm saying is, you gonna live here?
No, we live here now. So this home that we're fixing up, possibly for one of the kids, if they can speak.
So you're gonna sell this lot, and you're gonna sell this one?
Yes.
Possibly.
One of the things that we wanted to do, because we do live right here, was we wanted to... When we did present, was have a plot plan or whatever for the size of the house and stuff like that, and have that be, like, restriction or what, so it could only be that big, like, some huge thing there or something.
Okay. So you said it's an issue that he's gonna sell the lot, and that somebody else will build the house on it. What if he built the house?
It's not...
And he can't sell it? Just the house? He has to sell the whole thing?
Common sense says sooner or later, this going to be sold to somebody is gonna be sold to somebody.
Sure.
Whatever... Whatever. Even if he gives it to his kids sooner or later, it's gonna be gone likewise with this side. But really concerned with that, just probably we should have the ZBA put a restriction.
I thought they can't put restrictions, ZBA.
They may not be able to.
Can we do it?
They can't put restrictions on his only variance. You're right. Is either approved or not?
Right.
That is correct. Only a special permit can put a restriction on it.
But I mean, if...
If he voluntarily came in, okay.
But then if he came in here anyways, and we talked to him that you're not gonna... You don't want it, and...
Well, what we can do is we can play best to make a deal here.
Right.
Well, that's a good...
We won't depose it if you voluntarily put restrictions on it. That these will be single-family homes, never to have an accessory apartment or any kind of home business, whatever.
I, you know, because we live there, that's what I would want anyways, so...
That's a need, permanent need restriction. You put on it, you put those on it, then I personally, again, I won't say I don't like... I'll say I don't like the idea, but I won't depose it.
Deal or no deal?
Deal or no deal.
That's my deal or no deal.
Okay. But I just think it's gonna be two... 2800 is... First Street is not the best of streets around for...
It needs...
No. It's not. Actually, that's one of its assets. It doesn't happen.
Even if they repaved it, it's still wanting to be a very...
Slow, narrow path.
Yeah, narrow little street, right. Sounds sewer, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
That makes it somewhat...
Well, it is not a sewer. You've got no place to put a... Almost no place to put a field in here.
Right. But I mean, it's so close to the water, too.
Yeah.
You mentioned conservation commission. Is that the original conservation commission?
Yeah, because he bought the water. Within probably 25 feet of the water. So they're probably saying the house better be... I'm not sure what it is, so I can't tell you. Depending, do you think it was a big thing?
Well, what we'd like to do is put it in the upper corner, also the road, because it has a really nice view of Mount Warner Range there for Vice Professor Fieldall, who owns it. It's beautiful and... Anyways, that's our idea.
That's not... This is 150, so you've gotta fit a house in there. It's gonna be a small... 150 feet is a small... Certainly, the conservation commission is gonna come into play, and...
Yeah.
It's a question is, 200 feet back, that's perennial stream, by all means, and so you've gotta be 200 feet away.
Right, these are... Most of the houses on French Street, the three of them are currently 1100 square feet, something like that. So that's what we were trying to go with something in mind.
Well, you know, what you should do is go see Janet Stone at Doocy at the... And show him his plan and see...
Yeah, even before you could...
Right. Don't you try to go see...
Before you apply for anything, see what the conservation commission does. It's like coming into state offices.
They're at Doocy's, Doocy mornings.
Yeah.
The first, walk in the front door, right out of the left.
I think we did talk to her once already. All right?
Then they give a deal break.
I gotta start somewhere.
Okay.
So you...
Not if you take them back.
That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for coming.
Susan?
Hey?
You're up.
All right.
Neil's not here tonight, so you just gotta press forms. So should I get notes for the... A few technical corrections additions, or maybe just... Well, just your little see what you...
Well, no, you can love it. Those are both taken. This is just discussion.
All right, we don't need a lot of detailed stuff.
Great, I didn't get probably more. So I highlighted the most significant changes, but after I did it, I realized I didn't highlight all the changes, so I, you know, there are a few more things that I'll just talk to you for today, or tonight. But to start with, we have recommendations for the general bylaws, one of which was the excise tax. Now, I can see it's removed because it spoke to...
Your business.
Yes, he said all of that. Yeah, so that's good. You all said questions about putting the limitation on the number of establishments in the general bylaws. And the only thing that Barry has... Continues to say about that is that was strongly advised from the Attorney General's office right away. That was one of their first recommendations, and so he just didn't bust your head. He thinks that. They recommended it.
That is actually pretty good recommendation to be adopted in the general bylaw. So let's see, review it. Is the percentage of the liquor license...
Yes. Yes, so we have put 20% in right now. That's the recommendation.
And set that on a... Only allow you more, right?
Two. In other words, 20% of the... Number of houses. All the barriers that are not drunk, otherwise they're gonna package sort. Okay.
Right.
So we would be... At any wellness, with 1.2, we're actually allowing two. 1.6, we're selling two. Anything over one is gonna go up to the next higher number.
Yep.
Okay. So we've got a long way to go there, we have to sprint. Unless we wanted to allow it.
That is right. You can do that. And the next item was about public consumption, and I think one viewer is gonna check please. Okay. Did you hear anything?
No.
Okay, so we'll just leave that. Now, the next thing is the chart. And I wanna make sure that's all right, 'cause I was, you know, scribbling stuff down last time. I didn't have your current term in place. This has all your districts.
I looked at this. This is the same as this, what I looked at. This is the way we really wanted to do it.
Okay, that was my understanding. I wanted to make sure that was all good with you. All right, now, no one have any problems with that?
Okay.
Okay. Section 30, this would be... That was one thing I checked with Dave Nixon, too. He agreed with that, and then... Start with the general purpose. Oh, I see, I missed your name of your town in here. I'll add that in the first paragraph. But then we put the definitions in here, the second section. These are mostly the same. One that is different is on page five, marijuana research facility. That was something that was just one sentence. I went directly to the CCC. Mark Foundation, and there are definitions, and this is the definition that they added there. It is much more descriptive, I think.
Is this the same as what you emailed us?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
This... Okay, so let me sure.
Yep.
Okay. What's the institutional review board?
You've got to stop doing a copier.
You know, if you're gonna use human experiments, and this could be a loophole, it should be...
Institutional...
Research involving humans must be authorized by the institutional review board, is the...
My understanding is any research university has to have that, because it's a report.
It would have to be a recognized institution, as opposed to somebody creating their own...
Right, oh, yeah, yeah. These are well-established things, yeah.
So it'd have to be an educational institution, but not subject to the Dover Amendment. Okay.
And on page six, I added alcohol marijuana cultivation. And that is, of course, brand new, because it was something that you folks wanted to consider, and I wanna make sure that that makes sense to you. I thought I would keep it simple, and if that's the right name.
Yeah.
That's all good?
Section four, on page...
Yes. This thing, this outdoor, is there a minimum of lot and a maximum?
Yes.
These guidelines and that?
And that's...
There's still that someplace.
Right, all the state statutes to... It's like, oh, yeah, well, we do have for the outdoor, right, specifically. And we'll come up later.
Page seven.
So we needed to adjust something for the outdoor brewing. So here, you know, where they talk about all materials relative to cultivation, et cetera. Shall be inside or not visible, I had to put this up before. And down below, ventilation. Actually, I don't think I highlighted this, but after ventilation, I added all indoor establishments, just to clarify that.
Stop. For AI. When the very...
Oh, yeah.
The very first, for, yeah, for AI. Any type of marijuana establishment may only be involved, permitted by its definition, and they may not be... May not include other businesses or services. Question on that is, if a farmer wants to grow marijuana, does that mean they can only grow marijuana and can't grow any other crop? That's...
I would not think so.
That's not... It's not important.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, what if I were to need two separate corporations? One for marijuana, and one for farming.
Why?
Well, that's why I wanna understand this. I wanna ensure that we're not... We want to... What we want... The whole thing is that we've got farmers that they're interested in doing this.
Right.
But it's obviously not going to be the only crop they grow.
Right, so this, of course, was not considering that. This was considering, you know, an indoor brewing facility or retail. They don't wanna have...
But that's not what it says.
Right, you're right.
I caught it now. I mean, I says, okay? So...
So...
That's for A1. Yes, yeah, okay. By definition, may not include other businesses or services.
I mean, we could add something about excluding outdoor cultivation facilities.
Or somehow, where that... I want that... That to me says, like, it seemed like it could have a big loophole.
Right.
What we wanna do is say somehow include the words agricultural crops.
What does farm use?
Oh, except...
No, not just... Agricultural crops is actually defined in state statute. Agricultural is defined. Except for... I'm mistaken. I don't have the right word to use. Except for agriculture...
Agriculture.
Excluding agricultural somehow.
Excluding agricultural crops.
You also want to process agricultural crops. There are people, pilsip, lashing.
Right.
Well, that would all be included in the agricultural...
And related.
Agricultural uses.
Yes.
Yeah.
Excluding agricultural crops and related uses, something like that.
Related agricultural uses.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. But despite a... 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 Were made a phrase of that. Okay.
About that a little, but yeah, that shouldn't be a problem. Okay, anything else up there?
No.
Okay.
We were just discussing before you showed up here.
Yeah.
How specific do we wanna be in the security?
Right.
And we kinda came to some agreement. We don't tell them to put a seven-foot chain of fence with matting on it so you can't see inside, and...
So as we move on...
We would just say secure.
Okay.
But does that leave us vulnerable?
Um, it may, you know, the state does have their own regulations. It's helpful for you to have it in your regulations as well, so that it shows that you're paying attention. I'm sure that folks that come into public hearings are gonna be concerned, you know, about security issues.
Well, I'm concerned that somebody can say, well, I'll just put a smoke fence around it, and... Does the state have any security requirements on open row?
I think they do. I think they do, 'cause I looked at that.
Okay. The state allows open row, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Although they didn't include it, and... We didn't include it in our model regulations, because obviously it's more complex.
Right, but we wanted to include that.
Right, yes, yes.
So could we simply reference the state requirements on open row? By ref... Can we do it by reference?
Yeah, but why don't we look at that?
Well, exactly. Yeah, give us a...
I can have.
Give us a... I think if we just include as refer, by reference, as opposed to putting... It's a simple thing to put in, but I got a feeling that it may not be.
Right.
State doesn't do anything that...
You know, everything was really long.
Same as anything in a paragraph.
No, 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 no.
Okay. Well, you know, screening could be a row of corn. 10-foot-high corn.
Maybe that's okay, all right.
Yeah. So that's true.
That's a screen, but that's not a secure measure.
No, 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 it's like we've got site and security. We started meeting with screening requirement. They put up a row of field corn. For the most part, the row of seeds is toward the screener.
Yeah.
Okay, like there's a season...
Grow season in marijuana, isn't it?
Pretty much. So as marijuana grows, the corn grows. They harvest the marijuana, they gotta be harvesting corn within a very short time within each other. It's not gonna extend it into the joint crop, because it's used. It's all junk and... Okay. It says here, if you're open row, you need perimeter security fence, designed to prevent unauthorized entry to the cultivation facility. The sign notifying observers that it's limited access area. That's fine. What do you refer to it with?
Yeah, it's the right, right there.
It's a state test.
Ah, yeah. I said you all the security.
Right, and I didn't bring it with me at that point. So we just could reference the same section. And we could put in like, add the bend, so the same advantages are required. Video cameras, 24-hour recording.
Outside?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why it's gonna be hard.
No. But I mean, you know... Well, what we would need in it would be the planning board has the right to waive some features, like we do with the search, section of the site plan approval, waive some of the... What is... That... The planning board has the authority to waive it, would seem, not with the public...
Right, you probably want input from the police on that.
Yeah. You gotta keep a list of all people authorized to cultivate there.
But the whole... The whole thing... But the whole, the whole thing is this, what does growing marijuana invite? What does it invite? Does it invite people down and just pop and knock about everything?
Well, history tells us, a farmer and he was growing marijuana between a rows of corn, and it was pick-your-own, and they came to pick their own, some students from a nearby college.
Pick your own, brook your own corn and then not pick your own marijuana.
Oh, you'll pick your own marijuana, and they left without paying, and there was some bird shot through the window and.
They, they don't need a doctor.
Yes, but, so, uh, the corn was used as the screener.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
But anyway.
Well, as we get, you know, to that section where I did leave some of those security things in, but I did take some of them out. I tried to make it simpler, so when we get to that specific section.
See, I knew you think it's gonna be security, it's, it protects the farmer, but it also protects the citizen because what is it gonna invite?
Well, I, you, you're right, and we were, as we were discussing before you showed up, the, uh, we wanna get into the weeds.
Right.
Detailing every bit of security, because we don't ask them all how to be secure, so, uh.
Right.
They have to have some responsibility, but we, we will have responsibility, aren't we? But that, that maybe was.
I understand, uh, farmers, if you tell them, well, you gotta put up a security in their eyes, that's secure, in everybody else's eye, it's not so secure.
Well, that's, that's, that's your point, that's why we.
But if they wanna get a license to grow from the state, they're gonna have to show certain max.
Who, who's the enforcer? Enforce, enforce is the same law rule.
You bet your boots there's gonna be a branch of the state police that will enforce that.
So our, our police don't have to ride around to growing, growing facilities to see if they're.
Well, they may anyways.
I guess, and they wouldn't be driving around.
We don't want to, we don't want.
They wouldn't be driving around to ensure security, but if things start getting slow or broken into, they're gonna be all that, absolutely. You know?
Right.
Fences make honest people.
If, if you have farm plates, state police show up, my farm, and, uh, they wanna see it's a farm, you have to have your sign, I mean, they're, they're pretty tricky, uh, inspecting, they wanna, you gotta ride around the shore of the acreage you're farming.
Really?
So, and that's just for some plates. This is gonna be a little bit more serious.
Yeah, yes, it will be.
Okay, there.
Okay, sure, we move on to next page. Page eight, um, outdoor cultivation facilities, so you have, often a screen for visibility. So that was just a general thing, and that visibility paragraph, yeah. And then below in location, um, is where I added that, um, what does that actually mean, the minimum?
Yeah.
Uh, side and rear.
When, when you guys go by bats so far, if it's secured, what down makes the difference? Hundred feet, that's a lot of firewood.
Well, they can grow, they can grow other things, they can grow corn in front of it or any other, but.
But I mean, but if it's gonna be secured, what's?
The temptation of being right on the road, people have a tendency to pick sweet corn right by the road. They don't, they won't go.
There's a fence there, they go.
Well, that's.
Hundred feet, really?
I mean, I think there has to be some set back rules and regulations. If you wanna make it fifty feet, I think a hundred feet is reasonable.
I think we should go with a hundred and fifty like we've got. If we find out down the road, we wanna make it less, we could only make it less, but it's very difficult to increase something once you set at a minimum. It's a lot easier to reduce it. You know, if a lot of anything else, let's leave it at that for the time being, because none of us knows what makes sense.
All right, and what I did with that, um, number four, I had replaced the previous number four, which was restricting, um, these types of establishments on any parcels adjacent to residential uses. And you have to just take that out because that would be very difficult to, you know, on an apartment, to add things like that, so. Um, so, and then below, I, there are some of the security requirements that I left in. Um, well, basically, um, notifying the various parties in town about, you know, when this, um, establishment was gonna begin operating and, uh, general, um, information from the managers of the facilities, that there were lots of other people listed in there before I took them out.
Yeah.
Is all this stuff that you collect in public information or is not?
Um, I would.
Yes, I said it's all public information.
Should it be?
It has to be, anything that comes into the planning board has to be public, that's why we took out the whole thing about security. Because you don't have, you're not providing this detailed information on security to the state.
Yeah, we've got the floor.
As far as the owners and all the rest of this stuff, this is actually part of the application to the state.
Right.
We just wanna see it also. And if it's, if it's given to the state, that's all public information, so anybody's gonna question it if they wanted to. There's nothing, I don't see a problem from a, um, any kind of security problem or anything else by providing, giving this information. You know, who's the owners, who's gonna run the place, who's gonna operate the place?
Pretty basic, yeah.
Yeah.
On the next page in that same category, um, the last one there, number four, contacting, um, I put the, I changed the contact to the building inspector. And it said, you know, a whole list of people that should be contacted if there was, uh, concern.
What page do you look?
I'm on page nine, and number four there, under.
Reporting.
Reporting requirements. I think that has a planning board, you know, a whole list of people in the town, but, um, since the building inspector is really your zoning enforcement person, it seems to make sense.
Yeah, zoning enforcement officer.
Should I say that, is that a more correct term here?
Yeah, most likely.
Yeah, instead of zoning enforcement officer.
And then there's nothing else on that page, okay? Page ten, towards the bottom.
Building inspectors, building inspectors should give the applicant forty-five day, we're due, before taking any action. So probably zoning enforcement officer.
Oh, there too.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep. Maybe because of the, oh, yeah, we're not there, got it.
To the applicant, we will only hear the, the, the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer at the top of page ten, one and three. Yeah, it's probably mentioned in someplace, if, previous to this, a building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, probably would be the correct term.
Yeah. Makes sense. Um, so then down under application requirements, G, it had disclosed the names of the owners and managers and the board members and all the staff and all that. So I've removed those things that you requested and just kept in owners and managers. And then I also had removed the floor plan requirements, gates, alarms, all those kinds of things.
And they got a report, anybody that works in that, on that facility?
No.
We.
We just, we just, it seemed like, what, what do we care if we're working there? We have one of the main chief officers. That's available to the state, but they have to provide that information to the state anyways, so.
Well, they're gonna provide it somewhere, it's there, so.
Well, if there's people, somebody local, isn't it, they're running to the state every time somebody.
Well, I mean, I'm just talking more conveniently. What I'm just saying is, for the police, that, you know, it's a very.
So.
I mean, we don't ask for, in the mall, every person that's working for the.
I'll, I'll talk to the chief base, when I go see him, or I get his stuff, and ask him.
Yep.
Do you want, what kind of information, decide it is, what else do you want within his own, I'll give him happy.
Ask what kind of security requirements, what kind of reporting information.
Available to, to the waste department, right?
Yeah, sure, yes.
He says no.
Right.
Okay, he has a chance.
Right, so yeah, last one, you might want to buy him to H there. That was where I taken out the floor plan requirements, gates, monitor, up dance, general proposed security measures, including lighting and messing.
Yeah, that's where it is.
See if that's not for him.
And general security plans. Fence, we're gonna have cameras, we're gonna have this, we're gonna have that. What kind of rules we all really care?
Well, teamwork.
That's right. You'll find out sooner than they're working. When we're on harvest time.
Oh, yeah. And down the last one of that section on the next page, um, indoor written plans, which are minimum, must comply with the requirements. Um, there was a whole list of things there, including, um, operating plans, advertising, waste, transportation, energy. I took all those out and just left in hours of operation, security by any means.
Very, very broad, yeah, that's good. We're going to hours of operation now, general security, like I said, we're gonna have, we're gonna have cameras, we're gonna have this.
Does it have a smell from marijuana plants?
At certain, certain time of the year, I don't know how long the period is, it smells like scum.
Would you have money for it anyways?
Mm-hmm. I didn't, I didn't know that either, but I heard a few people tell me that, that when you go in, go in, go into a enclosed area, it almost always stinks because they have such a range of plants. There's always some, they're maturing at this, it's only a very short period of time. But being in an open world like this, you put in a field, it's, I think it lasts, I'm gonna guess, about a week, maybe not even a few days. Um, even the gentleman, the gentleman who was here, I don't know if that, the gentleman who was here with Joe Psychoski, from the, uh, one of the last meetings that we had like this.
Yeah, he used to be an ass.
He said that the period that he was an older is very short. Um, like in an open road facility, because like I said, they've got so many, they try to get maturing one after the other, there's always something being matured properly to the place that they're trying to support her, and, and he said, that stinks, it's all that stuff.
Oh, yes, so, so when they, is this like a one-time crop, like tobacco? Or is it just one crop early, one crop?
No, it's one crop here.
Well, if you're growing outside, the frost is gonna be a limiting factor.
If you grow it outside, it's one crop here.
And in fact, right now, it must be maturing because the police don't have to serve.
Uh.
Yeah, it is, it has a very similar, um, row coordination if you wanna grow tobacco. It's very similar to that, there's, you know, there's kind of flower, there's this, there's that, and, you know, there's, there's, if you plant it, I don't, I don't know the exact numbers, but it's similar, similar to tobacco.
Well, yeah, you can smoke it, you can chew it.
You know, um.
Well, you, you talk about, you got some experience with that, I mean, I don't know a lot about it, but I, I've never grown.
You know, it was amazing, I, I couldn't even run for office because I didn't partake. When we got out of dental school, it was considered a felony, so you would lose your, your dental license, uh, back then. So you're not gonna risk that.
You mean what, if you did drugs?
If you did marijuana.
If you did marijuana, and marijuana is a schedule one narcotic, still, under the federal law, so it's, oh, cocaine, heroin, marijuana, so that's, uh.
I know another people that have grown it, that they, they talk about how it grows, they're very similar, they just, how do you like tobacco? There was a big deal about it, they used to say.
If you wanna see a plant growing, go in the cemetery in North Valley.
It'll be all back tomorrow.
It's a long, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna, skinny for me.
Uh-huh, right. Yep.
Okay.
So, everyone, that was that out?
Well, they, you're, you got updated.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Now, do you have a time, we've stayed a little already for this?
We, we asked, we're gonna take a vote on asking for an extension in the.
What I'd like to do is I wanna put Bill's motion for an extension on a town meeting. And I wanna put, I already told Davis, I wanna put Davis, I wanna put this on a town meeting, we'll have them both. And if it looks like this might be ready for the town meeting. If it isn't, we table it, and then we vote for the extension of the moratorium.
Okay.
If it's not ready, table this, we'll be table one to the other.
So do you know when it will be extended, Tom?
Um, yeah, June one, two thousand nineteen.
Oh, that's gonna be our next town meeting?
When that town meeting is made.
Oh, let's get ready for that.
Oh, no, this, 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 we're talking. Our, our, our annual town meeting is October eighteenth. Our fall town meeting is October eighteenth. So we have.
You talking about the, uh, moratorium, John, that?
Wait a minute.
I think we're pushing.
That will be for a year, right?
Bill.
No, the hard term was on, you had it this year, right?
Wait, wait, let me explain. We have two more, we have one more meeting with Susan, a month from now. Hopefully, let's see what this looks like.
Okay.
Okay, I'm saying we have our, we put both this and the moratorium on the fall town meeting. If we think this is ready, we vote on it, and we table the moratorium article. If it's not ready, we table this and vote a moratorium.
Okay.
So we have a vote, and we're covered both ways. So ready, great, if we're not, that's fine.
So the main limiting thing, I think, will be, you have to hold a public hearing, right?
The public hearings will be held on the sixteenth of October, or the second, probably on the sixteenth of, whoa.
It is the.
So you had your notice out before that?
Before the town meeting, um.
But this is a little bit more complicated than what they're resiling there.
I, I agree, and I'm not, I'm only saying, my opinion, if you put a vote, if we're ready, we haven't ready to vote on it. If it's not ready, we simply table it. Okay? That's easy enough to do, because on the sixteenth, if we hold a public hearing, and we decide, and somebody says, oh, we wanna vote on that article. On the sixteenth, we can make sure this doesn't pass by taking no action on it. If we take no action, it's illegal to vote on the town meeting. Okay? You know, we can, we stand up and say, we, we take no action, we take this, somebody, for some reason, doesn't know we wanna vote on, you can't, planning board took no action on it two days ago, you cannot vote on this article.
When's the board close?
We could.
It's not close.
No.
It's not close?
It's the board of putting, of, of position, it's, we typically can put articles on it.
You gonna spot for it, right?
We have spots there.
Okay, placeholder.
We just, we, we have placeholders, we just need to get board.
So the placeholder, but the slot one do open it up.
Yeah, so, um, I'll talk to David about getting, make sure we get the, uh, the limitation, if they really wanna get the limitation on here. Now, this general bylaw, and I'll, I'll make sure the police about, uh, two different general bylaws.
Yep.
And if you, if you, if you could, by the eighteenth of that, then I could get the wording to the, um, what's it called, God Administrator for the Board. I can go there and change it.
Yeah, yeah, I know, there you go. All right, sounds like a good plan.
Thanks for your help.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Now, does anybody have, I'll make the motion that we put marijuana, bylaw, zoning bylaw, and the moratorium on the town meeting, and we vote at the town meeting, and everyone is vote here.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. That sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, votes, what, motion passed, we're set.
All right.
Well, we're both there, we're ready, we are, enough, recover. Well, we're both there, we're ready, we are, we're covered.
Okay.
Isn't Pioneer Valley, uh, sponsors one of those housing?
Yeah, it was about, it's about housing, just housing.
Pioneer Valley and, and Franklin Hills, right?
September twenths.
Right, yes, I've heard a little bit about that.
Bill said so.
Very little?
Yeah.
Yeah, Bill said so.
That sounds right, though.
September twenty-sixth, Amherst, Affordable Housing Trust, same thing you were about last year, huh?
Well, that, that was.
Same place.
What about that thing at Tony Russ? What is that?
It's on a Monday, isn't it?
What is that?
It's on a Monday.
Citizen plan of training, however, yeah, they put a door around.
Yes.
It's, this, this is a very complicated issue, the affordable housing bylaw and inclusionary zoning.
It's incredible, and the more you read about it, there are pros and cons, and, you know, certainly, we're hearing the pros. But the cons, uh, for example, in our bylaw, you have ten houses, one has to be affordable. But this is going to raise the cost of the other houses, the nine other houses for that affordable one. So the young people that are buying this starter home, whatever they may be, are going to have to pay more because the, no, there's not going to take a haircut. So it does increase the cost of ordinary housing in a.
Or, or they rebuilds off site.
But if you have an insurance loss, it increases, increases the cost too, because you've got to take that some of the insurance cost.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, it's, it's, uh, well, that's what, it's, it's not simple.
Absolutely.
It's not, it's not explained done by any structure.
That's correct.
There's some real goutchies on it.
Mm-hmm, yep. We are going to have an educational program, um, in conjunction with the citizen plan or training, however, after our next Pioneer Valley planning commission meeting, which is October.
Should we go to your modelist, excuse me?
So this primarily probably actually.
I'd like to hear something from smaller communities, say five thousand people unless they adopted the trans trust or what their experience has done, other than left it.
And way, it's a, right.
Way of the, whatever it does, or any other smaller communities, it's what their experience has done.
Yeah.
She's working in one of the smaller towns.
And also contact people that we can talk to, you know.
Beautiful contact.
Okay.
Thank you, good evening. Keep it in mind.
Yep.
Legal information, we've got two zoning bylaws, it's the moratorium or the marijuana one. We have the one zoning article that is forwarded to apply the select, but I guess it was written by Tim Nymer, about basically eliminating the, um, shingle, shingle appearance on roof. That's the only other zoning article.
Who's presenting that?
Yeah. Huh? We're, we're, we're proposing it, I guess it's going to be.
Who's presenting it?
We're not, we're not presenting it, we're just going to put it out to the board. We either vote in favor of it or vote against it at our public hearing, and then somebody else is going to speak to it. Okay, well, it doesn't indicate who the presenter is, because they, that will be, when they get the warrant out, they will give.
But if we vote against, against it, then it can't be combined with the double?
No, no, it's, it's only our recommendation, we either recommend approval or recommend disapproval. And the town meeting goes on.
The, the, the call process is September twenty-fourth.
Okay. It's just a recommendation that we present it out here. Usually, town meeting accepts votes with our recommendation, but now. So, out of the public hearing, everyone's, town meeting will vote accordingly. We do have a couple of bills to pay, we've got a daily Hampshire Gazette bill of two hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents for the, um, legal notices that are appearing in tonight's newspaper and previous to tonight, I mean, next week. For the, um, public hearing we have on Phil Schonley and two lots of business subdivision on the eighteenth of September. The way the Gazette is now streamlining their bills, and they're sending out an approval of the legal notice, and they're sending out the invoice at the same time. They have had a real disaster with the invoices. I spent quite a while with a town accountant, um, last week of our bills that went back to, I don't know, May, March, whatever it was, that we paid, and they said we didn't pay, but we put it against the wrong accountant, and the accountant has the invoices, the checks that we paid, what we're supposed to pay, so he's trying to get that straight up. Did you submit the bill for the month? Yeah, okay. And that was also listed on the meeting day. And, um, I'm, I'm.
I think, I never had success with the Gazette meeting.
They, I want to say, since the beginning of this year, they must have had a huge turnover in town. Because things are so jumbled, and I left there with the attorney, she said, I will make the phone call, she said, because I know what I need. And I says, okay, I won't get involved, you got, I gave her all the bills, and they said we were overdue. And she said, we paid that, we paid that, we only owe that one. Okay? And that's, so anyway, we have the, uh, this one, so we all maintain a motion to pay two twenty-three, twenty-eight to the Gazette. So.
Second.
So any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is approved, motion passes, thank you. And.
Did you find out you own for that?
We have one for our quarterly. Our third quarter pay for the planning board, total of five seventy-five. You entertain a motion?
So move.
Second. Vote for the second, all in favor? Aye, 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 a motion passes. Normally, we're reached to getting that in, so we'll be able to get one out.
Twenty-five please.
Do you have anything?
Yeah, I know.
Sure, okay.
Um, September twenty-fourth, Mike?
No.
It's at a conference at Holy Cross.
Okay.
Twenty-five dollars, so ahead.
Do you, are you by Holy Cross?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm director, right?
Um, what?
Is that, is there overnight, uh, funds?
Not, not at Holy Cross.
Can you imagine being him up in that, back in the woods? It might take a week.
It might take a week to get home. Want to pay, just, just bring the, uh, bring the invoice into a single reversion?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Want a motion?
Yeah.
I'll take a motion that, uh, we allot twenty, twenty-five dollars each for John and Mike to attend a conference on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, at, at Holy Cross.
Yeah. Yes, so, second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, a motion passes, you got that on you?
Let's see.
You know, on that, on that, you have a rule, whose tag name was on this, our commission?
That was, yes, the original, the history on it, which is, which is, the history on it is, is probably worth understanding. When they were trying to, we were trying to do something, there was a lot of concern about, through the Village Overlake District, we created the bridge to, uh, White Gap. We wanted a certain appearance, but what is that appearance? Well, so we, we, we appointed a committee, it was myself, um, I think, Robert Freeman from the Historical Commission, um, Kevin Michelson is a business person. It was like, I don't know if it was on it, maybe about four or five people. And we wanted to both prevent, if you would, a law from being built in that area, so that's why the twelve thousand, we took a one acre lot. And if you have a one acre lot, then, well, both, the many lots through this section are one acre. So we figured, you do all the math, the maximum sized building you could put on, a bill on the one acre lot is still leave zoning, is about twelve thousand five hundred square feet. That's where the twelve thousand five hundred square feet comes from. And then for appearances, we wanted to have, you know, clad board type siding or horizontal siding, um, you know, walls in the windows to give like an old colonial style look, a pitched roof as opposed to a flat roof. And shingles up, shingle horizontal roof, where it does, does, looks like a, a two-lister house, as opposed to the, we didn't want, we wanted to, what they wanted to avoid, we wanted to avoid, was a Butler metal style building being built in this area. The standing metal seam roof and vertical siding both represent kind of standard for, for metal buildings.
Then how did they get permission to do the town hall and the senior center for a metal roof?
The senior center has changed to a shingle roof. They, they pulled the plan on a standing metal seam.
For, for this building?
This building?
Yeah.
This building has metal, has this, same. The building inspector allowed them to do that. There was a clause in, and you can talk to him on this, there was a clause in the, in this Village Overlake District overlay bylaw, that if you spend more than thirty percent of the assessed value, um, upgrading the building, then you must comply with the Village Overlake District guidelines. If you spend less than thirty percent of the assessed value of the building on upgrading the building, then you don't need to comply with the Village Overlake District. That's the way Tim wrote this, and he allowed standing metal seam rooms on that. Right, on or otherwise, you can talk to him about me allowing it.
My point is, I never had heard one person complain about the metal roof on this building and the metal roof on the town hall. Not one.
Okay, and, and I'm simply saying.
I, I personally liked standing seam.
I'm, I'm talking of the bylaw came in.
Why, why do you like them? Because they last longer? This is going to last a long time, maybe two years?
No, this is, this is their stupid plan, fucking hundred, hundred thousand dollars, right?
But that's, uh, as far as, that's how the bylaw came into.
The bylaw came into effect, what was the gentleman's name that lives up here, Barso's, uh, that was on the early books?
Fred, uh. No, no, um.
Tom?
No. Oh, Tom?
CIA guy?
Oswald, Poslin?
No.
Oswald, Tom?
He was on Malcolm Rowe, right?
Yes, yes, yes. That's Tom, Tom, uh, you can do the M. He's on, he's on a long range building, he was.
Yeah.
Well, anyways, they, the, uh.
The Historical Commission was fairly active in, in revisiting this.
Yeah, and so, you know, go, go for all, we, we can talk about the same different things that they made, that's how it came about, town meeting, voted on, and those agreed to that, from the, like I said, from the bridge to the New Valley Road, that would be the general appearance of new buildings, new business buildings that went up, houses were exempt. And, you know, standing metal seam roof, it was just the idea that that's typically a Butler style building, and.
Do you put those on, cause all?
Uh, well, this was before, when this bylaw was put into effect, a standing metal seam on a roof was virtually unheard of, and very, very expensive when you did see it. Now, it's a whole different ballgame, right? It's a very, very common, on, on barns, on, on.
Well, it's affordable and it's good.
Well, it is, the places come, it's, it's, it's a whole different, it's, it's, look, it's probably fifteen years later anyways, when it was adopted, but things have definitely changed.
Again.
Um, yeah, um, yeah. So, you know, I don't have a strong feeling one way or another about it yet, um, you know, um, nothing. Anything else? Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Adjourned?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Leading sixty, thank you, and thank you, Brown.